Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. I'm the Chair, Sean Flowerday. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schulte, Rome Amundson, and Kristi Yocum. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of Nebraska's Open Meeting Act is located at the wall over the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October 29th, 2024?
I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call a roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, claims. Item two A, amendment to the payroll claims ending on October 30th, 2024?
I would move approval of item two A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of the claims processed through November 8th, 2024?
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Uh, Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two C, approval of the claim to El Centro de las Americas in the amount of $12,132.76?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two D, approval of the claims, including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided in Nebraska by statute 23-135 for, pardon me, Sinclair Hill and Associates dated November 4th, 2024, for a total of $375.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Item three are the consent items. These are routine business items expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of: A, amendments to the following county contracts; C-24-0356 with Rico USA Incorporated for print goods and services; C-24-0436 with Rico USA Incorporated for the lease agreement with County Corrections for Print Goods and Services; C-24-0593 with the Museum of American Speed for bicycle motocross exhibit; C-23-0414 with WW Granger Facility for MRO Industrial and Building Related Supplies and Equipment; C-23-0160 with Weathercraft Company of Lincoln for unit price roofing services; C-22-0853 with Siegel Marco Advisors to provide consulting services to Lancaster County regarding the annual investment administrative review of the county's 401A retirement plans and 457B deferred compensation program; C-21-0799 with Vulcan Signs Vulcan Aluminum for the annual supply of traffic sign faces; C-20-0638 with Murphy Tractor and Equipment Co. Incorporated; and C-20-0639 with NMC Incorporated for the annual services of necessary equipment and accessory rental; C-23-0896 with the Region Behavioral Health Authority, Region Five Systems, to pay the salary and expenses of the stepping up initiative coordinator; C-24-0701 with Dicky Heinzmeyer Incorporated, Lancaster County Youth Services Center Interior Modifications; 3B, amendments to the county contracts to provide HVAC services; C-23-0182 with Capital Heating and Air Conditioning Incorporated; C-23-0184 with Sarah Systems, North Central Incorporated, doing business as Sarah Systems; C-23-0183 with Johnson Controls Fire Protection; C-23-0185 with Prairie Mechanical Corporation; C, right-of-way contracts with the following: GSK Consumer Health, Alvo Road and North 98th Street, in the amount of $253; Twin B LLC, Southwest 58th Street and Olive Creek Road, in the amount of $1,180; D, utility permit 2584 with Charter Spectrum for underground broadband installation; E, change order four to county contract C-24-0098 with Pavers Incorporated to extend the project to December 1st, 2024, and allow asphalt repairs on North 70th Street and Waverly Road and South 148th Street and Old Cheney Road; F, a grant contract with the Lincoln International FC for the youth program in the amount of $15,000; and finally, G, receive and place and file the following reports for October 2024 from the Clerk of the District Court, the Assessor Register of Deeds, Records Management, and the County Clerk.
Move approval of the consent items. Second?
We have a motion and a second for the consent items. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, new business. Four A, resolution regarding the purchase of real property located at 815K Street, Lincoln, Nebraska pursuant to the real estate purchase agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Property. This is a resolution that is going to authorize the Chair to sign the closing documents for the property at 815K Street. The deed is going to be held in 50% ownership, like most of the, uh, most of the real estate that is under the Public Building Commission umbrella, for lack of a better term. The terms also, uh, it includes a settlement statement, the utility transfer, tax preparation, those types of things. And on the settlement statement, I'd just like to mention that we are receiving a credit for, on the prorated property taxes, our earnest money. And also, you'll see November rent in here. I am doing a lease back to the seller for 90 days, walkaway clause with, um, with 30 days' notice type of thing. Um, he needs to stay in place before his, his new property is ready. And I don't need the building up until that point. So, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
You're in support of this, in other words. That's my takeaway. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yeah, the only thing I'll add is, uh, the Public Building Commission, I think, voted to support this all the way through. And, and they, it's, it finishes off that block. It's the only property on that block that we don't, that isn't publicly owned, I should say. Um, and so, um, it, I think this makes it easier for us to make any changes or anything we want to do for our campus in the future. I think it's a good idea. And frankly, it's only going to go up in price, so. Important. Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four B, Amendment One to the Real Estate Purchase Agreement between Genda Family Services LLC, Lancaster County, and the City of Lincoln for the purchase of real estate located at 815K Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. This amendment extends the closing date to November 14th, 2024, and allows Genda to remain on the property after closing through a separate lease agreement.
Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Properties, um, at the request of the seller, we moved the closing date for a few dates in order for him to get everything together that he needed to. We had no problem with that. And it does refer to the lease that will go over here in item C.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four C, a lease agreement between Genda Family Services LLC, Lancaster County, and the City of Lincoln to allow Genda to lease real property located at 815K Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, for 90 days from the county and city. The lease term begins November 14th, 2024, and Genda will pay $6,560 per month in rent.
Thank you, Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Properties. This is just the lease agreement, the 90-day, um, lease back. Um, we've agreed on a rental rate. They're going to be pulled back for utilities and anything else at that point. So, this is, this, this works out well for both of us, actually. Get a little bit of rent, a little bit of, uh, income coming in for any improvements, uh, that we immediately would need to make. Um, I would suggest, um, approving this and be glad to answer any questions.
I think it's a good arrangement. It benefits both parties.
Yeah.
So, I would move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest? Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Four D, a resolution in the matter of the comprehensive plan conformance 24019, adopting the one and six-year road and bridge construction program for Lancaster County fiscal years 2025 and 2026 through 2030.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Uh, this is our annual resolution approving that we're in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which is kind of an important thing, uh, with our one and six.
Move approval.
Very ambitious. Again, lots of moving parts out there. And, uh, appreciate all that the engineering department's taking on. I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just, a question for you, Pam. Um, I just looked over. I don't see any changes that stand out to me from the presentation we had earlier, a few weeks ago. Is that true? Or is there anything that I should have, that I overlooked?
No, there is no, no significant changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion and a second. No further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four E, a resolution directing the county engineer to conduct a study and the planning department to write a report regarding vacating a portion of North 101, 141st Street between Agnew Road and Rock Creek Road, more particularly described in Exhibit A and located in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Good morning. This is the first step in this process of vacating a road. Uh, Lancaster County's engineers requesting that we vacate north of 141st Street between Agnew Road and Rock Creek Road. As you can see by the exhibit, it's a, it's not even a dirt road. It's really a grass and path road. There's a bridge located on this that has been closed since 2016. So, we are asking to vacate this road and, and the study is the first step in that vacation process.
And then, John, part of that process will be notifying all the landowners.
Correct. Correct. We'll send, so, we'll send out, or I'll, I'll notify the clerk's office, who to contact, and they send out a notice when the hearing is set up so that they can come to that hearing. And, and if they have any objections or, or favor of, they can speak then.
Right. This is, and this is all a county process. It does not go through the planning commission.
Correct. This does not. This is something we're requesting, and then you will decide at that time. A lot of this road is, is statutory, so generally, it would go back to the adjacent owners. However, on the south end, there is some deed-in right-of-way, which we currently have. And that'll be something we'll talk with you about at that meeting as far as how we would suggest, um, you, you proceed with that.
Okay. Yeah, I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four F, contract with Emmy Collins Contracting Co. Incorporated for the replacement of County Bridge W104. The cost of the county is not to exceed $414,702.26.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Uh, this bridge, W104, is located at the location I've, um, set forth on the map. See if they're a little better. Uh, it is in the southern part of Lancaster County. Uh, this is one of our structures that is currently rated poor. Like our other, uh, bridge bids, uh, this fall, this is, came in extremely aggressive. I believe there were also eight bidders. And so, Emmy Collins Contracting, who is a very well-known box culvert contractor, because this is a bridge-length box culvert, uh, will be replacing this bridge. And I believe he's agreed to an early start. And so, he, he thinks he may be done with this by Christmas. We'll, we'll just pray the weather holds for him.
Move approval.
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You know, promise to be done by Christmas.
Let's hope for no snow either.
Right, right. Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four G, uh, agreements with the Shemmer Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services needed, uh, for replacement of bridges for the following: County Bridge B133 at a cost of $178,152, and County Bridge R213 at a cost of $119,268.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Um, Bridge B133 is located, uh, approximately a mile west of North 70th Street on Agnew Road. And, um, Bridge R113 is located on Hickman Road, about 97 feet east of 120th Street. Both of these bridges are rated poor. Uh, I'm kind of sad to see Bridge B133 go, because it's an older bridge, and it, it has some, it has some features that we don't really put in bridges anymore. We're much more functional than we, uh, than, than we were 100 years ago. Uh, nevertheless, in order to ensure, uh, that our system is resilient and keep moving towards that ultimate resiliency, it's really important to have these bridge plans ready to go. They do take about a year to develop unless you're under extreme duress. Uh, and then you, you can get them done a little sooner, but it gets to be super expensive and, and a little messy.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So, just, so this is the planning. Your intent would be to do the work then in the next two years?
So, where we're trying to get to with, uh, these bridges that are rated poor, that we have a plan for them, right? And, um, so, if they take a year to develop the plans and get all the environmental permitting and engineering done, uh, then we go ahead and try to, of course, um, in the future, get money allocated for them.
For them, sure.
Yeah. Hopefully, bridges stay, uh, very cost-effective. That's my, my goal. We want to stay on the, uh, the underside of that, not the over side, right?
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four H, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to order and execute a purchase order to Ace Eden Metals for county culverts in the total amount of $19,315.70.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Uh, this contract is for three pipe culverts that we want to replace with county forces. And you may or may not have noticed that the size of culvert that we're replacing with county forces is increasing because a few years ago, when you funded, uh, restoration of that crew, they're becoming much more experienced and really doing a great job at being super cost-effective and getting these culverts in for the county. We still have, uh, 700 more to go, but this is three less.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four I, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to execute a purchase order to Murphy Tractor and Equipment for rental of one backhoe and two wheeled orders for four years in the total amount of $532,583.22.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. As we have talked about multiple times in front of the board, this equipment is becoming more and more expensive. So, in the case of, um, this backhoe, uh, loader and, uh, in case of this backhoe, as well as the loaders, what we're looking at is a four-year lease, um, over purchasing because it seems more cost-effective.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Well, I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Four J, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to order contract to Gana Trucking Excavating for tree hauling in the amount, total amount of $50,000.
Thought you were done, huh? Did a good run here. It's all right. I get it.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Turns out that the work of the engineer is never done. Uh, this is a contract for Gana Trucking this year. This last year has been really difficult for us with, um, what the staff refers to as pickup sticks. And it's really pick up large trees. And so, once in a while, when trying to get these county roads open after these storms, we really need to augment, uh, services, um, so that we can get those trees hauled out of there and those roads open as quick as possible. And so, Gana, uh, has been great for an extended period of time helping us with that. And so, we look forward to their assistance in the future.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four K, contracts with the following to provide annual service of snow and ice removal for miscellaneous locations in Lancaster County. Vasa Construction at a cost not to exceed $2,000. K2 Real Estate Development, doing business as K2 Construction, at a cost not to exceed $12,000. Jake's Odd Jobs Incorporated, at a cost not to exceed $5,000.
Good morning. Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Property. This is snow removal contracts this year for your outlined buildings. Public Building Commission takes care of, uh, these buildings here, but this is the DMV, West O Street, 220 South 17. Youth Services Center, Election Commission. We had bidders this year. That's the upside. Last year was a real challenge, so.
I would move approval. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four L, an agreement with Cost Quest Associates LLC granting Lancaster County a license to use the proprietary data and mapping compilations related to broadband serviceable locations. Cost of the county is $2,080 for one year.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For M, Special Designated License Applications from Creekside Wedding and Events LLC at Roca Berry Farms for the following dates, December 6th and 7th, 2024, and December 13th and 14th, 2024.
I move approval.
Second.
We want people getting married, right?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For N, The Reappointment of Gwen Thorpe to the Lincoln Lancaster County Keno Human Services Prevention Fund Advisory Committee for a Three-Year Term from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln in Lancaster County. Gwen Thorpe is an incredible asset on this committee. She has been part of this committee. This is one of a couple terms now that she's served. So she has experience in government and she has volunteered. She knows a lot of these agencies that are applying for funding, and she's able to provide input on that. So I would ask that the board reappoint her for another term.
I would move approval of this. As long as she is willing, I think, to take advantage of her knowledge base is good for us.
I would second. I sat on this committee with Sarah, and Gwen adds a lot of insight to the discussion because it's always one of those, one of those many difficult discussions we have where there's, what, 150, I'm making these, 150,000 available and there's $600,000 worth of requests. And sorting through that to get the money into the most helpful locations is challenging. Having someone like Gwen is a big slice to second.
Good. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For O, An Agreement with Nebraska Wesleyan University to Provide Educational Courses and Instruction to Inmates at Lancaster County Department of Corrections. There is no cost to the county.
Good morning. Maria Hatfield, Reentry and Rehabilitation Administrator of Corrections. This partnership with Wesleyan would allow for college-level courses and instruction to be brought into the inmates. We have two professors from the criminal justice sociology and business law, along with students that enroll in prison outreach, would come in and instruct the inmates. Eventually, hope to expand to language, arts, different areas within the college, but we'll start out with these areas for now. We also find it a great benefit for the students to be able to have some one-on-one experience that they can put on the resume and maybe use it towards some recruitment effort in the future also.
This is a really, really good move. Thank you for organizing this and making, getting it over the finish line. I move approval.
I will second that. It's a great, it's a great step forward.
Thank you.
And I would just add, Maria, I'm reading this, there is no cost to the county, meaning that the folks at Nebraska Wesleyan are committing to this program with no financial considerations.
Absolutely. Right now, we have five students enrolled in the prison outreach program and two dedicated professors to it, so.
That's really excellent.
Thank you.
Big thank you to the folks at Nebraska Wesleyan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
For P, Recommendation from the Purchasing Agent on behalf of County Corrections Director to Award Contracts to Kidwell Incorporated for the following: Replacement of Existing coax cable with Cat 6 cable in the amount of $279,996, and replacement of existing analog cameras with new digital cameras in the amount of $144,300.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For Q, Contract with BMI Imaging Systems Incorporated to Provide Microfilm Digitization. Cost to County is not to exceed $274,699.
Move approval.
Second.
It looks like this is, did you want to say anything about it from the district?
We do have somebody here. You're not getting off that easy, Simon.
Simon Rezak, Clerk District Court. A few weeks, a few, yeah, a few weeks back, we brought this contract forward and they had to make a couple adjustments to the contract. This is the digitalization of our microfilm that is deteriorizing, and this is to give us a good backup on it and easier access to our court files.
Yep. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For R, A Contract with Safety Clean Systems for the Annual Service of Used Oil and Antifreeze Collection. Cost to County shall not exceed $5,000.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For S, Acceptance of a Grant Award from the Nebraska Crime Commission in the amount of $87,744 to Support Lancaster County's SFOI 2025 JAG Election Security Project.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. This was money from the Crime Commission to assist with this past election. A bulk of the funding went to the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department to assist with additional security and then some cameras.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For T, Sub-Award Contract Without Nebraska for the Lancaster County ICJR Project in the Amount of $11,005.
Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. This particular contract is for a grant that came before you on April 27th of 2023 with this, and therefore approval. I know it takes a long time in the federal process, but this was one of the requirements of the grant. Again, if you remember Voices of Hope and Friendship Home were cut by VOCA funding, 40% the first year, and then additional 40% the subsequent year. And so we worked with them to find additional federal funding to bring in. This particular federal funding had requirements associated with it. One of the requirements was to work with the Cultural Center, so you will see those contracts come before you. And then another requirement was to also have our agencies, the victim service agencies, and then also law enforcement and the prosecutor's office to receive training on working with individuals from the LGBTQ population and how to properly serve them. And then when there are crimes committed against them, to make sure that we're able to prosecute those cases.
Very good. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I oppose the granting of government funds to political activist organizations. I opposed this while I was on the school board, and I'm going to continue to oppose it here.
Well, there's the performative stance. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll.
Schulte?
Nope.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. For U, Grant Contract with Voices of Hope for the Coordinated Response to Reducing Domestic Violence Program in the Amount of $36,041.
And this is additional funding too, again, that we received to help with cuts from Voices of Hope and then Friendship Home to fund their advocates.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. And for V, A Release of the Eastment of Utilities Located in Circe Edition Lancaster County, Nebraska.
I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to Item 5, Public Comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes, and that time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or decreased at the discretion of the chair.
A Letter to Jim Pillen Regarding Todd Wilgin. Governor Pillen, Nebraska Revised Statute Hereafter NRS 32-214 States, "The Election Commissioner shall be responsible for the enforcement of the Election Act. The Election Commissioner shall be removed when it appears that his conduct is prejudicial to the public interest. If the Election Commissioner is appointed by the governor, the governor shall remove the Election Commissioner. If the governor fails to remove the Election Commissioner, any citizen of the county may institute an action to order the governor to remove the Election Commissioner. I am hereby requesting that Todd Wilgin be removed from his position as Lancaster County Election Commissioner according to NRS 32-214 for the following reasons. First and foremost, it is in the public interest to have an election commissioner who understands and honors his oath of office. Wilgin's job is to protect the people's elective franchise from unqualified voters and secretly manipulated vote counts. He has failed in both respects. Wilgin is prejudicial to the public interest in that his allegiance is to the secret election processes of Secretary Evnan and ESNS, over, above, and against the public interest of his county constituents in transparent, honest, and publicly verifiable election results. Transparent and publicly verifiable election results facilitate the peaceful transfer of power. Secret vote counts are the antithesis of transparent and verifiable election results. Wilgin refuses to provide any election transparency or verifiability or auditability whatsoever. Handcounts of two or three races in two or three precincts does not constitute an audit when it comes to computerized elections where cheaters can easily compartmentalize fraud. Number two, Wilgin is even prejudicial to the public interest in simply reconciling public, basic public election records, inasmuch as he is unwilling to provide a list of voters from a given election that can be reconciled with the number of votes. Number three, Wilgin is prejudicial to the public interest in knowing the truth. He claims that our paper ballots constitute the cast vote record. That is not true. It is a blatant falsehood. Wilgin also claims that casting votes is the people's business while counting votes is his business. Again, a blatant falsehood. Elections are the people's business from beginning to end. Number four, Wilgin is prejudicial to the public interest in citizen watchfulness to make sure he is enforcing the Election Act as required by NRS 32-214, which necessarily includes enforcing the spirit of the Act as found in 32-207, which is to administer fair elections that are verifiably free from outside influence. Wilgin does not want to deal with bad actors, so he simply assumes they don't exist. Wilgin is prejudicial to the public interest in being watchful citizens, period. He recently publicly called a group of watchful citizens, quote, malicious conspiracy theorists, end quote. It is in the public interest to have checks and balances in government. There are no meaningful public-facing checks and balances in Wilgin's administration of our elections. It is in the public interest to have watchful citizens. According to the engraving over the front door of our Capitol Building, "The salvation of the state is watchfulness in the citizen. Watchfulness, not trust." It is in the public interest to have verifiably honest elections because most, because many important decisions, many important lives, and many billions, if not trillions of dollars hang in the balance. No one can honestly say that they do not want verifiably honest elections. If they did, they would betray themselves as being dishonest. It is in the public interest to have an election commissioner who follows 32-102 and liberally construes the Election Act so that the will of registered voters is not defeated by the way in which he conducts the election or certifies the results. Todd Wilgin, Todd, excuse me, Todd Wilgin's thinking and conduct concerning the administration of Lancaster County elections is prejudicial to the public interest. Governor Pillen, for the reasons stated above, we, the people of Lancaster County, call upon you to remove Todd Wilgin from his position as Lancaster County Election Commissioner. Respectfully, Robert J. Boer.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. In a way, it's good to have the elections out of the way, because now we have the information and the ballots and all that that needs to be looked at. Take a look, you know, what has really gone on. As a previous speaker spoke, I think that's a lot of good questions. You know, what really is the truth? What's the honesty? Look what really happened. Look at the comparison between the 2020 elections at the presidential level for the nation. You know, when you compared the number of Republicans to Democrats in total, the Democrats way exceeded the Republicans in that one year. Yet, this year, during this vote, that is not. It goes back to the normal standard. So what's really going on behind the scenes? You don't think we have a problem here in Nebraska, in Lancaster County? I think we really do. But until we get information and can actually look at the detail, how do you know? I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered as to why the votes turned out the way they did, and the ballots. You know, what is really the truth? We need to be able to go through and actually do a hand count of all the ballots for Lancaster County. Go back and check them. There really needs to be a forensic audit, because I'm afraid we've also got some fake ballots in there. So if you count fake ballots, you're not going to come up with anything different. So what you're trying to do, at least to start, is do a comparison between what the machine count is and what we actually have in our hand as far as the ballot itself. That'd be a good starting place. But then I think it needs to be a forensic audit to see what actually changed votes, you know, within the machines then to come up with your actual totals. So I think it needs to be taken a good look at. Need to start asking some questions. We've got you here as supporting the public. Support us. We need to have information. It needs to be accurate. We need to have the ability to take a look and see what information's out there. You have to be interested in what is the truth, what is honesty. With all the stuff going on, going on around the nation, look at all the different manipulations that are going on with the ballots. We're not immune to that. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Hearing none, please proceed.
Item 6, Announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November 14th, 2024 at 8:30 a.m., Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, November 19th at 9 a.m. with Board of Equalization immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LKTV.